See you tonight. These are supplemental hearings for our May date. We had some technical difficulties. It's our custom to begin with Pledge of Allegiance, after which we observe a brief moment of silence for our servicemen and women. So normally our town staff will share the flag. All right. If you wouldn't mind joining with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll begin tonight with a couple of continued public hearings. Our first is for property of 4611 Dual Road. The property owners are seeking an area variance to erect a 30 foot by 32 foot pole barn within 100 feet of a water course. It's proposed at 40 feet from the east and 32 feet on the south from the water course. So Mr. Beckwith. I'm not seeing. Chris Jensen, did we hear anything from Mr. Beckwith about not appearing tonight?
Nothing about him not appearing. Notifications were sent to him for all the meetings and stuff. We hadn't heard anything back. We tried calling once and no, no response.
All right, well, we'll come back. Remind me, Chris, if I forget to recall this before the end of the night. We'll go back to our agenda. Next is owners of property at 4799. They're seeking two area variances, a primary dwelling with a rear or lakeside setback of 25.3 feet when 30 feet is required, resulting in a 4.7 foot variance. And secondly, a garage side setback of two feet when 10 feet is required, resulting in an eight foot variance. Mr. and Mrs. Futterman.
This is Greg McMahon from McMahon LaRue. Eli Futterman won't be with us tonight. He unfortunately is in the hospital. But asked us to continue the presentation for him. Also, Jack Sigrist is the project architect.
We hope that Mr. Futterman is as well and you know, wish that he could be here. But go ahead, Greg, if you want to present on this application.
Yes, last time we appeared before the board, we were asking for several more variances. We went back, had some internal discussion. We are now proposing to re-subdivide the Futtermans' two parcels. And we're doing this for two reasons. It gets rid of our coverage variance that we were requesting. And number two, it now is providing us with some suitable area for installation of a septic system. And we've, we have gone and retained, or Mr. Futterman has retained Grove Engineering, Bill Grove. They're very familiar with the septic systems on Canandaigua Lake, dealing with the watershed and dealing with the health department. And I've, I spoke with Bill Grove as early as this morning and they're currently working on plans for the septic system for this. But that's, that's a separate issue. Right now, what we're asking for is the two foot side setback for the garage. The replacement garage, which will be slightly more of a setback than the existing garage. And then we're asking for a small rear setback variance for the existing or for the proposed home. And those, those are the, the only two variances we're now requesting.
All right, Greg, from my perspective, the rear setback to the lake is pretty much in character with that neighborhood. I personally don't have a lot of issue with that. Can you just talk with us a little bit about the setback for the garage? Two feet is very minimal, particularly for maintenance and other issues. Can you just talk through with me what's driving that?
Well, what we're, again, due to the, the geometry of this parcel, where it's a one car garage, first of all, it'd be used for, for possibly one car and in order to accommodate parking and, and also movement into the garage. It just, it, it works in that area. That's, it backs up to a existing creek that comes down through the, from the west to the east. Again, it's, it's a level area. There has been no erosion. The old garage has been there for many, many, many years without any issues. And we're just aligning the rear to the property line. And, and again, the existing garage is, I think, at 1.8. We're, we're proposing two feet off of them. But it just, it offers, again, offers more area to utilize for parking for, for family in utilizing this cottage.
Okay. Questions from the board for the applicant? Okay, hearing none. We'll open this up. This is a public hearing. And so for all of our public hearings this evening, we'll follow the same procedure. We'll first hear from the applicant, then questions from the board, then we'll open it up. If you have a question or comment on an application, just give us your name and address. Keep your remarks directed at the board as opposed to the applicant. And then when we've had comment from the public, we'll go back to the applicant a final time in the board before we move to close. So is there any questions or comments on this application from anyone in the audience?
You can also unmute yourself as the audience and just say your name. We turned the function off, but you can, you can now unmute yourself.
All right, seeing none, we'll come back to the board a final time for any questions.
There's no garages on the house, right? There's no way to attach this to the, the, the end of the, the house or anything like that. I'm just trying to avoid the, the variance, that's all.
There are no garages as part of the house structure itself. And again, if, if we, if we're attached, let's say we're attached to the southwest edge of the house, the problem comes in with accessing it. As you come in the driveway, you've got the steep slope to your left. And it just, you need some room to, to access in and access out. And we're kind of sandwiched between a creek, some steep slope and the proposed cottage. So it's, there weren't a lot of options.
I, I commend you for making, addressing the septic, you know, issue. And, and what you've done makes sense. I'm still struggling with the two foot setback. That's, I don't think, I asked the other members of, of the board to we, are we in the habit of granting a setback of only two feet? Is this, would this be a precedent?
I don't know that we've granted them, but I mean, the old garage as it is now is less than two feet.
Okay.
Yeah, Chris, hold that, that photo right there. You know, I wanted to give the applicant opportunity to speak to that position. That's why I asked that question at the beginning. But you can see this parcel does have this interesting topography, just on the photograph to the left. You know, it kind of rises there. And then as you're coming to the foreground of the picture, you're coming back over towards the house. So it is a challenging spot. I think, you know, we could put some findings of fact in there that, that help alleviate the potential for somebody claiming that it's establishing a precedent, Bob. But to answer your question, we don't generally grant a lot of two foot variances for anything to a property line.
Okay.
I have, I have a quick question regarding that picture. Does it look like that's on like slab or a block or something? I mean, it doesn't even look very safe, that garage.
This is Jack Sigrist, the architect.
Sure.
And it's not safe.
Okay, I was, I was gonna say, it looks like an issue in itself, so.
All right, any other questions from the board on this application? All right. Greg or Jack, whoever, you know, is taking the lead, you got, are you guys comfortable closing? The public hearing?
I am.
Yes, I would say yes.
Okay. Well, with that, we will close then for all of our applicants tonight. When we close a public hearing, what that means is that we end the public portion where we receive comments from the applicant or from the audience. We'll still deliberate on the applications this evening when they're closed. But the deliberations, while accessible and viewable by the public, the public doesn't participate in those. So we'll go ahead and close this application. We have 62 days to render a decision. Although, as I said, it's our custom to deliberate and vote the same evening we close applications. All right, going on. Was there a comment?
No, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Yep. Next is property of 4964 Emerson Road. The applicant is requesting a front setback area variance for a front porch addition, specifically 37.5 feet from the parcel boundary when 60 feet is the requirement, resulting in a 22.5 foot variance. David, Deborah?
Hello, hello. Good evening.
Go ahead and tell us what you'd like to do here.
We would like to add a porch. Our, we, we've always wanted one. We feel that it would enhance the value of our house. And we would like to be able to utilize it as well and, you know, hang out in the front yard.
Pretty simple. We just want to add a front porch to the front of the house.
We.
It would span the entire front of the house.
It, in the way the house was actually built too, there's an overhang that, that would actually, we feel would benefit in the, the presentation of the house. I guess is the best way to put it. It's not, it has a garrison overhang, which is, we've learned about. And we feel we could utilize that in the design of the roofing portion itself, so.
So. Okay. Any questions from the board on this application?
Does that, um, does it fully, will, will it look like, like a covered porch when you're done? Or I mean, what's, is it kind of like a wraparound? Okay.
It'll just be, just on the front, but it'll make the house look more colonial versus the garrison. Yeah, there's.
There's a kind of the idea of it. And the entrance will be on the, on the side, which is kind of, yes, right in there, which lines up with the driveway entrance and kind of goes in between what we call the breezeway, which is between the house and the garage itself, so.
Okay. What's, so I know there's that in that other picture. It showed a little square platform. I'm assuming that's like the step.
It is correct, yes.
How much further will it be like, will it be larger or?
It will be about, about a foot and a half larger out from that.
Okay.
Not, not very much. I think the step is probably about four and a half or five feet, so.
Gotcha.
Yeah. But it will, both edges will line up with the exact side of the house. The roof would be the same. It'll, it'll come in at the garrison or at the overhang and then go up with the proper roof pitch there. So in, in, we'll have railing too. Even though we don't think, if I remember correctly, the, the height requirements, I, I don't think will be that high where we have to have a railing. But we like the, would like the appearance of it because it, it formalizes it. So we would have that.
All right. Any other questions from the board on this application? I was just curious, when I drove by, you guys are kind of there on the corner of 28 and Emerson. There's a large tree. If you're looking at your house just to the left, you're going to be able to keep that?
For, we, our plan is really another year. If, depending upon when you drove by, you might have seen another little maple that was planted. And that, that tree is a locust, very messy. And we intend to trim it back, but the, the power line folks have trimmed one side rather radically. So that didn't help it either. So, so, yes.
This is more curiosity than anything.
Yes, yeah. It, it is, it is a nice shade tree, but it, they, they are very messy. And it's, it's kind of lot, very lopsided right now, so.
Okay. Well, let's open this up to the, to the public. Do we have any comment or question for the board on this application? All right, seeing none, we'll come back to the board one last time. Any questions? All right, then David and Deborah, are you comfortable closing your application?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, well, that will close. And move on to our next public hearing. This is for property of 4764 County Road 16. I just accidentally closed my agenda. They're seeking an area variance for the placement of two accessory structures. First, 96 square feet of uninhabitable accessory structure at 12.1 feet from the setback when 60 feet is required. So variance of 47.9 feet. And the second variance is 96 square feet of uninhabitable accessory structure at 34.1 feet setback when 60 feet is required. Sue, I see you there. Are you going to speak for this application or are the applicants going to?
Oh, I'll speak, but both Heather and Chelsea are on this evening. So if there's any questions that they may need to, to jump in on, they can.
All right.
So it's a pretty simple, simple project in that we're, like Terrence said, we're looking for the two variances for the, the sheds. The property currently has, there is a storage shed on, on the property. It is being removed as part of the home interior renovations. There is no garage associated with the property. Yep, thank you. You're pointing to where the existing shed is. They are, Heather and Chelsea have moved into this property recently. That was a pre-existing shed. And actually, in conversations with Chris, it's not to code. It doesn't, its location isn't currently compliant. So it is being removed and replaced with two newer sheds that would be located, as you can see, in that location there. If you can go to the diagram that we submitted, it helps kind of identify the unique constraint that we have on this property. Not that one, there's a different diagram. And it shows where the sheds can, those are just the typical shed drawings. The architectural style of the shed will be done to match the recent reciting and roofing of the house. So if you've been out there, the time of application, it wasn't complete, so I, I couldn't include photographs, but it would, they would match architecturally. So this diagram shows in the yellow areas where we would be allowed to place the shed. And as you can see, that is in a sloped area on the property. There's a beach field, a tennis court already exists. And it's also not proximate to where they need to store things for maintenance associated with the pool and property. So it's, it's also very inconvenient. If you can go down further on this PDF, there's an image that shows the diagram, like the locations. You can see the property. The sheds will also be located tucked behind mature vegetation. So we'll be using the evergreens that exist on West Lake Road to screen the sheds. And we're doing two smaller sheds instead of one large to replace the, the storage space. You can see the shed that's currently there to the left, right behind the house. These two smaller sheds will replace the storage lost in that, that shed. And I think that's really all I have to share. I'm, I'm sure we could open up to questions.
Well, Chris Jensen, just remind me for my benefit, the code requirement on the number of sheds for this parcel, how many are allowed?
We, this is not the residential lake district.
Not in the residential lake district. So there are up to like five accessory structures, probably over 3,000 square foot of accessory structures. The only issue is it doesn't meet the front setbacks.
Okay.
They are, they are permitted inside yards now, as long as they meet the front setback requirements.
And to meet the front setback, we would have to be beyond the existing stone retaining wall and beyond the slop, the sloped area on the property, which really isn't feasible for, yeah, that's the 60 foot setback, so. So that's the constraint that we're dealing with or the unique hardship that we're, we're, I don't, we've identified for this project.
Okay. What questions we have from the board? All right, we'll come back to the board and then any questions or comments on this application from anyone in the audience?
Um, yes. My name is David Applebaum. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, David. Give us your address and then your comment.
My address is 4771 West Lake Road or County Road 16. My property is directly across the street from the, the proposed property or, you know, on, on the opposite side of the street, it backs up to my garage. And I had a couple of questions. I submitted a letter maybe a month ago for the last meeting that had the, the signature of about five or six of my neighbors along the same road that are directly across from the property. And one of our concerns was the lighting issue that was going to be, say, installed on the property as they were improving it and stuff like that. At night, when you walk out, it's pitch black there. You can see every, you know, constellation that you possibly can with a clear evening. And there's tennis courts up there. There's a fire pit. I don't, you know, now there's a pool and I'm only concerned that, that, you know, the property should be improved to their use. But at night, I'm not looking for a glow coming out of there. I feel we'd see it from our docks on the pool or our docks on the lake. And I guess that one of my concerns is the lighting that's going to be up by the tennis courts and the fire pit and the basketball court that's up there. And the second thing I want to ask, the two, the two sheds that she's putting at the end of the, the people are, applicants are putting at the end there that were proposed, what are the sheds being used for? Is there going to be a pool pump in there that's going to make a motor noise or anything like that? I guess I'm just trying to preserve the, the sanctity of the, of the property, the way I've experienced it for the last 32 years.
All right, thank you, David. Any other questions or comments from anyone in the audience on this application? All right, we'll go back to the applicants. So basically, questions about lighting, although not directly relevant to this application, but still, if you want to address that for the concern of your neighbor. And then the question that is relevant to this application about intended use of the accessory structures.
Um, the, the lighting, which we can respond to, but as you said, not, not relevant to the application. The only lighting will be low level site lighting associated with safety concerns, you know, and access around the property. So there may be some low level lighting around the pool. This application in this project has no plans to light the tennis court or basketball court. And Heather and Chelsea, you can, you can chime in, but I believe we've talked about your reason for purchasing the home and being on Canandaigua Lake is you also enjoy the, the experience of being on the lake and not having lots of lights and, and enjoying the scenic quality. So it's not your intent to light up the property.
Correct, yeah. Any lighting we'll put around will just be for safety purposes.
Um, relative to storage, it's storage, as you can imagine, there is no garage. They're removing the shed that exists, so they have, you know, equipment associated with the pool. They have a child, so there's toys associated with outdoor storage. And no, it will not house pool equipment that is located outside of the buildings. So it's really just storage for things that need to be stored inside and protected from the weather.
Thanks. And I should say to Mr. Applebaum, I'm not saying that the lighting question isn't relevant to you or to the neighbors. I'm just saying it's not relevant to this application. We're only looking at the sheds and the variances associated with those sheds. Any lighting that may be, you know, down the road with the proposed pool isn't really in front of the board. And, and the sheds, as proposed, don't include any electric or other utilities. So I should just maybe spoke to cook it. I'm not trying to say it's not relevant to you or to the neighbors, but it's not something that we're addressing here tonight. All right. Any other questions from the board?
My question is, I see you've got, I mean, you've got slope issues there, but you're putting a tennis court and a pool in. I, I'm just wondering if there's any way the accessory structures could be placed in a position which would not need a variance. There's a lot of room on this lot and I'm just wondering, looking at where it is right now, I don't know what the accessory structure is for the tennis court. If it is, that's got to be pretty level. I'm just curious.
Do we respond to that or, or no?
No, yeah, of course.
Oh, so the storage is for the items that would need, be needed around the house proper at that level. And then it slopes up. The tennis court's existing, an existing structure. We, that, that was there when they moved in. So there is, while there is space around the tennis court, is it an upper elevation? It wouldn't be necessarily convenient to store pool items that are used more daily in the fenced in area around the pool.
I'm not trying to tell you what you do with your accessory. I just don't know. I know the tennis court is there. I'm just saying that some of your slope issues become, you know, secondary in view of the fact that you've got level spots to put this accessory structure. I'm just trying to avoid a variance if possible. Right. And maybe, you know, I, it certainly looks balanced. I understand that. But I can understand the concerns of the neighbors that it's that close to the road.
All right, any other questions?
Can I just, can I say one more thing? We did place it so that it is no closer to the road than the house. So we did keep it beyond the, the face of the existing house, which is also closer to West Lake Road than I think would be permitted by setbacks. So we did keep it behind that and placed it behind mature vegetation. So we don't really need to wait for much to grow up so that they are, they are concealed and screened. They're not right on West Lake Road. And again, being that it's storage for pool, toys and things associated with the maintenance of the property in the fenced in area, it seems sensible to locate them. it seems sensible to locate them in that area as opposed to up in a different fenced area where the tennis court is.
Hi, this is Pat Brewer. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Chelsea and Heather. I'm your neighbor as well and we've met before. I just had a quick question on the pool and the shed. Obviously, there will be a fence around the pool. Will the sheds be inside that fencing or outside of that fencing? And how high will the, again, I'm thinking about walking along the road there and how visible everything is relative to Dave Emery's thoughts as well.
All right, Sue or the applicants, if you want to respond to that. I mean, just, just to clarify, we asked that all comments be directed at the board, but you're more than welcome to respond to that question.
Yes, the sheds will be located in the pool fencing. And okay, I'm not sure if I got the other one. They're located inside the pool fencing, proximate to the pool.
Just, just how high the fencing would be? How visible is it from the road?
It's pool regulation fencing. It's a black aluminum four foot height pool fencing that's required for safety.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right. Well, are you comfortable closing? Sue?
Um, yes, yes, we're comfortable closing. Thanks.
All right, great. Well, with that, we'll close this application. Our next application is for property at 4495 Davidson Landing. The applicant is requesting area variance for building coverage of 20.6 when 15% is allowed. So it's a 5.6% variance.
So good evening, board. My name is David Hanlon. I'm representing Daniel and Debbie Gibb or Gil, I'm sorry. And we've got, so Lucas Bushin, it will also be presenting from Marathon Engineering as well as Dan and Debbie Gill, property owners. But just in general, real quick, we do, we did also amend the application. There are some roof overhangs that have openings within them. So the application really have 19.6 or 19.7% coverage. So in general, I'll just speak to the project quickly. Dan is going to give his overview from his perspective and then I'll speak to the project. But as you can see on the site plan, we have, there's an existing, you know, house there now. We're adding on to that. It's quite a big addition, but it's, we're saving the house there and adding to the right of it over what is now the tennis court. So there is a tennis court there today. And as such, you know, we're not asking for any variances beyond building coverage because we meet height setback and coverage compared to what is there today. So I'll ask Dan if he can give an overview from, you know, the property owner's perspective and then I'll speak to the nature of the application.
Sure. Thank you, David. The, the property we're talking about is a property that's been in my family for 35 plus years. And, you know, we've been enjoying that property for a long, long time. And, you know, as my, my father passed away and, and so we're looking to sort of expand the house on that property as well. And as part of this process, we notified all the neighbors on Davidson Landing that, that were in the midst of this process. And then we were up this past weekend and got a chance to talk to a number of them and, and talk through the project. But anyway, we're very excited about spending more time here and, and on this land.
Thanks, Dan. So, and as you mentioned, so far we've received no negative feedback. It's just been just general discussions with the neighbors and, you know, so we're here presenting tonight. Chris, I don't know if you can pull up the building elevations. And then this is, we have kind of an overview, but then there's the two dimensional elevations too, if that's easy to pull up or I can work off this. So as you can see, the house, it's primarily, it's one and two stories, two stories facing the lake. We've kept it under the height limit by kind of managing floor levels within the building to keep it under the 25 foot rule. And we've got the side setbacks covered as well and from the lake. The, and so by nature, it's somewhat of a horizontal contemporary design. And so you'll see a lot of these horizontal lines extending. In general, the nature of the application is we are, the, the building envelope itself is at 14%. But we have some extended overhangs and balconies that give us the value of the 19.7 that we're at. So it's a little bit of a, that goes with the character of the design of the house. We're trying to keep it low and in that nature that it gives us some of those horizontal lines which were extending a bit. And so Chrissy, if you go back to that overall view, the aerial exhibits. This kind of shows you, you know, the kind of an overhead view. And though, even though the house itself is at 14%, we do have some overhangs and some porches that get us beyond the 15%. And we're mitigating in that in ways by, you can see the, the larger porch to the lakeside, we're putting a green roof over that. So that'll be a pervious surface, collecting that to their rainwater collection system. And then the other porch to the right of that is, it's an open transparent porch. We've got just one post, but we're keeping the sides open. It won't be screened in. It won't be a three season event. These are all very transparent elements. And then the other overhangs, we've got openings within them to also mitigate the coverage on, on the site. This will be all natural materials. You know, we've got a lot of wood and stone as well as the glass and with darker trim. So it kind of blends into the background as this property is against, you know, a hillside site. The house will kind of recede back into the landscape into the, you know, to the context. So we're at 19.7, 15% is allowed, but our site is also 29,000 square feet. So we cross that 20,000 square foot threshold of a site that needs or only allow 15%. So we're in the same category of sites that are one, two, three, four acres that are at 20%. And then, you know, we're, we're more closer to sites that do allow 20% coverage. So I think there are some factors here that, you know, can be considered that this is an application that, you know, has merit to it. This view does show you how on the corners where we do have some extended overhangs, you know, they're very transparent or they're open. They have a green roof. So we've, we've done a lot of strategies to mitigate the, you know, the presence of them. So Dan, or I'm sorry, Lucas with Marathon Engineering is also here and he's, he can run down through some of the more specific aspects to the site.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, David. I'll just step the board through that second or maybe the, the first attachment is the building coverage figure. It might be the third or fourth tab you got open there. Yeah, we can go over this one. I mean, I just want to step the board through the building itself and may repeat a few things that David went over. But just kind of break down the numbers as they fall across this structure. So as David mentioned, we produced the actual request by creating an opening in the, in the roof overhang. So now he's got it down under 20, 20%. We're at 19.7% coverage on the site. And 5.7% of that coverage is associated with the roof overhangs, the covered porches and patios. So even though those, those areas are, are considered part of the building from a code standpoint, I think it's worth, you know, breaking that number out and understanding how much of it comprises the building. So those exterior areas that are covered, you know, they don't present in the same way that an enclosed area would. And they're visible and you can see through them and they create a lot of nice useful areas for the owners on this property. So, you know, that's 5% of the building coverage without roof overhangs, you're at 14%. That's the actual footprint of the building. But, but those, those overhangs, they are there. So in order to, to sort of offset the impact of that, we've incorporated that green roof. So the green roof is 2.2% of the building coverage. So, you know, that's, that's another way that we're, we're trying to, to reduce and offset the building that we're asking for in, so 2.2% that, that acts as pervious area or not as site coverage. So the building, if you look at it in terms of an impervious structure, is 17 and a half percent coverage. Yeah, that, that shows you the green roof there that it's the southeastern covered porch. So one other thing that, that wasn't mentioned yet today is, is just in terms of overall site coverage, we're reducing the coverage of the site pre-development to post-development. And we're taking 2% coverage off the site. So even though the, the building itself is growing to be a more usable, livable size and a size more consistent with the, the properties on this residential neighborhood, the actual extent of impervious on the site is being reduced by, by 2%. So that helps to, to sort of push the dial back towards, towards the pre-development conditions. And then, and then the other measure that we're implementing is the rain garden. So between the rain garden and the green roof, reducing the impervious area, you know, these are all efforts to offset the impact of development. And those rain garden areas, you know, from a stormwater perspective, talking DEC language, they're intended to eliminate the effects of impervious area. So this, you know, entire home, the driveway, the pickleball court, it'll all be directed to that rain garden, which will help to filter and attenuate the storm events as they, as they come off those impervious areas. So those combined efforts are, are what we've implemented to, to offset the variance request. And I'll let David or Dan or Debbie, if there's anything else that we want to say, I'll give you a chance to interrupt. But I think just in general, we want to hear any questions that the board has. We want to dialogue about that. And we want a chance to, you know, sort of hear your concerns and, and talk about those. So if there's nothing else, I'll, I'll turn it back over to the board.
So I want to make sure I've got my numbers somewhat close. I tried to do the math. Maybe it's on the plan someplace. But impervious surfaces is certainly one issue that we look at. We also look at just the overall impact and scale of the project. That's what, one of the things that building coverage is meant to restrain, that the board, the town board has passed. The way that I've looked at the numbers is you're replacing an 800 square foot home and incorporating it into a 4,500 plus square foot home. Are my numbers in the ballpark? I get 4,570 in terms of proposed square footage for the new home.
Well, Terrence, are you talking about footprint or overall square footage or?
I'm talking about, yeah, just what is the square footage of the home?
So the home itself is, there the existing house that's on there, the upper right hand corner. That's 635 square feet and yet the footprint of the addition is about 2,600 square feet. It's two levels, but it's not, it's not double the footprint. We have some two story spaces in there. So I think that's a reasonable scale for this property.
So what's the square footage footprint of this, of this new structure?
The, the footprint would be about 3,200. Lucas, you had that exhibit. It shows.
Yeah.
I think the enclosed footprint area.
Yeah.
If you've got that.
I shared a building coverage figure with you before the last feeding, Chris. But including the garage, the, the new building is 3,300 square feet.
There you go.
So that gives you a breakdown of all the square footages and, and the percentages that I went over today.
So as far as square footage and scale on the property, the house itself is well within what's a typical scale for a property of this size that you would typically see along, you know, the lake.
Except for the fact that you're 5% or so over what's allowed, right?
Yeah, with the nature of the design of the overhangs and, and the porches, which we've tried to mitigate with green roof structure and, and openings within the, the overhangs. But I guess some of that is, is a byproduct of the 25 foot rule, which pushes houses down. And so we have some of it extended horizontal nature to it. And if we had a one foot overhang on it, it would look, you know, not quite as appropriate. So we have extended them. And by extending them though, we've mitigated as well with those efforts that Lucas had pointed out.
Does the existing garage stay?
There is no existing garage.
Can we go back to the previous diagram of the, of the property? Not that one, the, the one with the layout of what's there.
So, yeah, it's the, the 26 by 26 foot house is on the upper left hand corner of that, of this.
Okay, all right. My, I'm sorry. That's my fault.
And, and our garage is blended within the house. You can see that it's on the upper right hand corner of the footprint.
Are you aware of any other variances which have been granted in that area for building coverage?
No, I, I did survey the residential street. This is on a private drive Davidson Landing. And there are a property or two that are, I would estimate are above the threshold based off of just aerial measurements. But I, I couldn't document whether variances had been granted for those or not.
Chris, are you aware of any?
Most of the houses were built before the, the code came into place.
I know Pentonella is, you know, I'm not sure the timing of that. This certainly is of a smaller scale than that property. But I don't know what that coverage is percentage wise or what size lot they had to work with. But there certainly is no, not of any larger scale than that. And that's two homes to the south of us.
I think they had some, I don't know about lot covered. I think they had some setback issues that they had to apply for.
Yeah, there was the code revision too. I don't remember the date, Chris Jensen, when they, they altered the lot coverages and, and building coverages. What was that, three, four years ago?
It was probably 2015 or 16. At that time, we didn't have lot coverage and stuff codes. We, we made everything more lenient based on what size lot it was and based on all the variances that they were issuing at the time.
Yeah, that was my recollection that the, that the property we're discussing to the south, the Pentonella's was probably 2012, 2013, somewhere in there before the code revisions.
The difficulty too is, you know, you jump from 20% allowed on a site just a little smaller than us to 15%. So it's not like a sliding scale. And we've gotten it under the 20% and mitigated to appear much less than that, like Lucas mentioned. Struggling to get closer.
That's not our issue. The board puts it where it wants it.
I know.
Quibble about what the code is. The code is what it is. We can address variances, but what other questions do we have from the board on this application?
I've got a, a question about pickleball. You, I did my research and I'm a pickleball player. Your, I believe it's 30 foot by 60 foot. Am I correct with your, your court?
Yep.
That's, I. That's a ideal. That's like what everybody recommends. But the uh, you, you said in your application that uh, porous pavers or something permeable uh, was, would not work or would not be acceptable. And I, you lost me on that one. Uh, I know there are different surfaces that are being used all over. And when you talk to people who play pickleball all the time, uh, they like indoors because uh, playing on a gym floor is easier on your knees. When you play on the asphalt, it's harder. When you get older, that becomes an issue. If you had a chance to build your dream pickleball court, I think and the dream court would be one which would be a little easier on your, on your knees, but also one which uh, would drain well or have the porous uh, potential. Uh, can you uh, bring me up to speed on, on the research you did to uh, to make that decision?
Yeah, yeah, I can give you a little bit more background there. So that was one of the, one of the things we investigated early on was the potential of, as we were exploring all kinds of environmental uh, options on this property, uh, porous pavement for the pickleball court came up. Uh, I, I don't think I'll list the name of the company that I contacted that sells porous pavement products, but they did not recommend it for a pickleball court. The, the thing about porous pavement is that it's, it has holes in it. It, it has openings. And uh, the salesman used the term cheese grater um, to me is, is uh, the reason why you wouldn't want to use it on an athletic surface. Uh, they're just, they're not good uh, for surfaces that you might uh, be running back and forth on or falling on. Uh, it's dangerous. It's not recommended. Um, so that's why we ruled it out. Cause the supplier wouldn't, wouldn't even uh, recommend it.
Dan, do you have any experience with it?
I know, I, I don't.
I would just pass that along. I've talked to people, but they may not be in the know as much, but they would say, we'd love to have something that would drain well, but also be uh, easier uh, on the body for wear and tear. And I've just passed that along. I uh, maybe the, the one uh, person you talk to truly is uh, has the final word, but um, I think there might be some controversy with that in terms of uh, other surfaces and some that drain that uh, are uh, are useful. Um, and I, I'm just throwing that in because what we're trying to do obviously is achieve the environmentally, the, the uh, the best presentation uh, for you.
All right. Any other questions from the board on this application? All right, we'll go to the audience. Any questions from anyone or?
Sorry, I did, I'm sorry. Yeah, um, in the packet we got, and I can't access it right now. There was a letter from the Hagertys, I believe, about some adjustment of the lot line on their side. Is, has that taken place or is that pending or? Maybe I missed, you know, missed.
Doesn't, that, that doesn't relate to this property. That relates to property across the, across Davidson Landing.
Oh, okay.
There's no, no amendment to the property line here.
Okay.
All right, now we'll go to the public. Any comments on this application? All right, back to the board a final time. All right. Mr. Gill and representatives, are you comfortable closing your application tonight?
I am.
Yes.
All right, with that, we will close. We'll go back now. Um, at the beginning of the meeting, I called the application for forty-six eleven dual road, Brian Beckwith. Anyone appearing for Mr. Beckwith?
I don't see anybody.
All right, in deference to the applicant, I'll make a record, a motion that we adjourn this application to our uh, next hearing date. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, any nays? Okay, the Beckwith application is adjourned. Now begin our deliberations. Once again, the deliberations are open to the public, but they're not participatory. Uh, it's just the board discussing at this point. So forty-seven ninety-nine County Road sixteen. I really appreciate the fact that they went and redid this project to reduce the number of variances. The lakeside setback in my mind is very standard for that neighborhood and it's kind of there with the existing structure. I'm not sure there's much more they can do. Uh, the question is the garage and it, it's already existing there. I think this will be an improvement. So I'm in favor of both of these variances. I'd love to have discussion with the board.
I, about the garage, I was concerned about the uh, the two feet. But it, uh, the topography is uh, is a bear without a doubt. And uh, after viewing the photograph, um, I guess there really aren't too many options.
I agree with that, but sometimes maybe it's not a viable option.
Well.
I agree with Bob. I think two feet is pretty minimal. I, I, I don't know that they've really tried as hard to maybe remedy and come up with something different for a one-car garage, but.
Any other discussion points on this application before we vote? All right, Chris, if you could call this, um, and, and why don't we just call both variance applications at the same time?
I don't have any decision sheets or anything to go with this. I have just the determinations and stuff. I could put them up on the screen.
All right, then if it's all right, I'll go through and, and, and do that. This public hearing has been for uh, two variances. The first is for um, a primary dwelling. Hold on one second, Chris. Okay, for rear lake setback to a primary dwelling of twenty-five point three one thirty feet is required, resulting in a four-point seven foot variance. And variance request number two, a garage side setback of two feet when ten feet is required, resulting in an eight-foot variance. Kelly?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Chip?
Yes.
And for myself, I'll vote yes. So the variances are approved four to one. Chris, you'll have this all recorded, so I'm going to go ahead and give some uh, reasonings for the decision that the board will then add to. So the board's decision is based on the descriptions and drawings provided at the public hearing and on the other submission dates that the development office can fill in. The board has reviewed the application, determined that the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or the community, and therefore the variance is granted. Granting this variances in keeping with the character of the neighborhood as demonstrated by the applicant, specifically the primary residence, uh, the variance for the primary residence structure is in line with other uh, properties in the neighborhood and is uh, consistent with the existing structure. The variances will not change the character of the neighborhood. The uh, garage, proposed garage will have a greater setback than the current garage and is in the same general location. The property is limited by unique topographical features, particularly steep slope to the west of the garage that limits its ability to be placed at a greater distance from the property line. Does anyone have any other findings of fact they'd like to add to this decision? Okay. Then we'll then go to conditions on the decision. Uh, the board is going to impose two conditions. The first is that the variance that is granted or the variances granted are specific to the most recent plans submitted to the Z B A. And any change in the plan shall validate the variance. And secondly, the variances are conditioned on building permits being issued within one year of the date the variance is granted. Failure to obtain a building permit within one year shall validate the variance. All right, next we'll move to um, forty-nine sixty-four Emerson Road. This is the proposed front porch, thirty-seven and a half feet from the boundary line when sixty feet is required. Any discussion from the board on this application?
I don't, I don't have any issue that I see. I mean, kind of goes in line with what the house, where the house is already. There's an overhang now. I'm, you know, it's just a porch, but somebody else has some issues. Feel free to just chime in.
But looks like going either way east or west, there's some houses of similar distance from the road.
Yep. Yeah, I drove by a couple times and I don't see a safety issue with the porch. Yeah, it's closer than the sixty feet, but I don't think it will really be an issue and there'll be trees in there, um, protect any motorists from potentially reaching the home. I'm in support.
I, if I live there, I'd probably be asking for the same variance. I, I think what they're proposing is a good idea and uh, makes sense.
All right. Well, we'll call this vote then. So for property forty-seven ninety-nine, it's proposed that uh, the board issue two variances. No, excuse me, I'm reading the wrong one. Property forty-nine sixty-four Emerson Road, it's proposed that the board issue a variance for a front porch addition, specifically thirty-seven point five feet from the parcel boundary. When sixty feet is required, resulting in a twenty-two point five foot variance. Kelly?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Once again, we'll uh, issue a decision with findings of facts and conditions. The board um, has granted the variances requested based on the this descriptions and drawings provided at the public hearing and on other submission dates that will be filled in by the town development office. And the board has determined that, that the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or the community, therefore the variance is granted. The proposed porch will only be slightly uh, closer to the road than the existing um, steps up into the house. There's a existing overhang that will match uh, the width of the porch. The board has found that there is no um, damage to the character of the neighborhood as the porch is consistent with other homes in the, in the neighborhood along Emerson Road. Anyone have any other findings of fact they want to add on that one? No? Okay. And then we'll impose our two standard conditions. First is that um, the variance is granted specific to the most recent plan submitted to the Z B A and any change in the plan will validate the variance and the variances condition on building permits being issued within one year of the date the variance is granted. Failure to obtain the building permits within one year shall validate the variance. All right, we'll move on to property forty-seven sixty-four County Road sixteen. This is the uh, two sheds. Ninety-six square foot feet each and the setbacks are thirty-four point one. And this is for the one further up the hill and twelve point one for the one closer to the road. Any discussion on this application from the board?
My, I actually, so I have a question. So the, the pool is, has been permitted or is it, has it been built? I didn't actually drive down there. That was.
The addition to the home and the pool and everything's been permitted. Tennis court is existing. Uh, the only things that haven't been permitted are the two proposed sheds.
Okay.
My feeling, it's a big piece of property and I don't think they've tried very hard to put these two minor structures in an area that complies with the code. Or at least, at least mitigate some of the variance.
But it's in, it's within the fence, right? And so you're not gonna, you wouldn't, you'd only see like the roof line or what's? That's my understanding or no?
Uh, it will be within the fence for the pool is what the applicant, or maybe that was Sue, um, but somebody from the applicant explained that.
This, this is the fence right here and there is an existing shrubbery line going in front of the fence as well.
I mean, I think the board is familiar with my view of these uh, accessory structures. I didn't like it when the town board revised it so they don't have to be in the backyard, but that has been the change. But with these ones, I do like it that there's some uh, greenery to shit, to, you know, protect them from view from the road. I'm somewhat sympathetic to the topographical issues. You know, putting them up on, above the, the retaining wall and having them be accessible to the pool, I think would be a a challenge for the homeowner, but.
I think they stated in their presentation that there are tall trees that block the, the view of the sheds. Am I correct on that?
Um, when I drove by, I remember more sort of bushes, but we do have a shot, Chris, if you can pull it up where it shows that, a picture. Maybe it's trees. I can't recall.
I can't find any photos in the directory.
Okay.
I have like shed information and stuff.
Okay. Well, what I wanted to uh, uh, say was uh, based on what the applicant said, that the, there, there were trees or I, I thought she said trees, but maybe it was vegetation that would block this. Uh, I'd want as a condition that if anything was to happen to these living things, they'd be replaced and the cover be um, uh, you know, restored. Uh, I know there are all kinds of problems, uh, challenges with trees right now between ashboards and gypsy moths and storms and you name it. And I think that uh, for me to be positive on this, I want those to not be visible from the road. That, that's my feeling.
Okay. Anything else from anyone on the board on this application before we vote? Chip, you look deep in thought. You ready to vote?
Yeah, I think I was just trying to think if, you know, would you be a way of just shifting the one that's closest to the road back closer to the other one or you know, making the two into one, I guess that's. That was, that was.
And those are, those are for the toys, right? Not necessarily for any um, components to the pool, correct?
Yes, yep. Yeah, I had to pull up the street view on Google. Bob, you're right. There are a couple trees in there, two trees.
Okay. Is that something we could write into a uh, a condition if we did approve that the uh, that, the expectation is that there would always be a a uh, uh, trees or vegetation blocking the view?
Well, we can put in any reasonable condition that we would like. Um, I know that from the town's perspective, when we put in conditions, it creates an enforcement obligation for the town that really, I mean, Chris, you can speak to this if you'd like to. I just don't know that there is always enough. Really, I mean, Chris, you can speak to this if you'd like to. I just don't know that there is always enough manpower to. Review those or keep up with them or even monitor them.
After a project's pretty much set and done and a certificate of compliance is issued, we pretty much walk away from the site. As long as there isn't a code violation, we aren't driving around trying to, I mean, it's private property. We kind of leave, let it be kind of thing. So maintaining a hedge on a private property would be a little beyond our scope.
So, you know, Bob, it's just in terms of enforcement, probably not a lot of enforcement would occur, but doesn't mean we couldn't put it in and. You know, hope that the applicant and future property owners and years that would follow would comply with that.
That's really what I had in mind. I didn't picture Chris. Putting in overtime, you know, checking on this property, but I, I would like it to be known that without those trees. This, the variance would, would be looked at differently by at least one board member.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and call the vote on this one. So the board is considering two variance requests. The first is for a ninety-six square foot uninhabitable accessory structure at twelve point one feet from. The front setback to County Road sixteen. And the second is for a similarly sized uninhabitable accessory structure at thirty-four point one feet. Setback from County Road sixteen. Both accessory structures require a sixty-foot variance. Kelly?
So we're voting on the first one?
No, I just, well, I, we can do it parcel. My view is always that, you know, we're voting based upon. You know, the breeze, the, the application, the project, which is for two accessory structures, not one. But we can vote them individually if you'd like to.
No, I, I tend to agree with Terrence because if one passes and the other fails. And you can't impose the condition that, that it's subject to the plan as submitted. So, it's a, it becomes a vicious cycle, I guess you'd call it. Sometimes it makes sense to separate them out when there's, you know, like nine different variances. And it's just keep track of stuff, but I, I agree with Terrence that you should try and vote on them together if possible. Unless there's, unless it will clarify things to vote on them separately.
Okay.
Which I'm happy to do if you'd like to do that, Kelly. There's only two of them.
No, I know. I was just wondering, you know, I mean, I'm further away isn't, isn't as difficult to swallow as the second one, you know, so. All right, so you want me to vote? I'll vote on both.
All right, go ahead.
I'll say yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Chip?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. So the board's decision is based on the drawings provided to the board at the public hearing and on earlier submission dates that the town development office will fill in. The board has found that the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood of the community, therefore the variance is granted. The variance will not change the character of the neighborhood. The proposed accessory structures will be largely shielded, or at least partially shielded from view by existing vegetation. The board has considered concerns from neighbors about potential impacts to the character of the neighborhood and found that the grain of the variance will not have an adverse effect on the property. There will be no lighting on the proposed accessory structures. The proposed accessory structures will not be any closer to the road than the existing principal dwelling. And the topography limits the other potential sites for the proposed structure based upon their proposed use. The proposed structures are, are proposed as accessory storage for a pool, which will. Be near the road and other areas of the proposed, or other areas of the site are separated from that area by a retaining wall and topographical features. The board imposes, or any other findings of fact that anyone wants to add?
You can, you can put in that what, it states uninhabitable, but I mean, I don't know if we referenced that specifically and also the fact that it's within the, within the fence line of the pool, maybe.
Yep, we will say that it's also within the fence line of the pool and these are uninhabitable accessory structures. In terms of conditions, the board will impose three. First, the variance granted is specific to the most recent plans submitted to the zoning board appeals. Any change in the plan shall validate the variance. Two, the variance is conditioned on billing permits being issued within one year of the date the variance is granted. Failure to obtain billing permits with one year shall validate the variance. And three, the proposed accessory structures shall be shielded from the road by vegetation. When vegetation is, needs to be, be replaced, it shall be replaced properly. Does that get kind of what you wanted, Bob?
Yes.
Okay. And I'll put there in that condition that the existing vegetation satisfies the condition. Okay, next, our final application for tonight, forty-four ninety-five Davidson Landing. This is the building coverage. Now, Chris, during the. And I should have written it down by dinner, during the presentation, the applicant said that there had been revisions which reduced. The building coverage calculation from what was advertised. Do you have that handy or know what that was?
Previously, they were calculating. To different edges and stuff like that. Now they're calculating it per the town code, how it has to be done. And it's, it's a reduced one and the pickleball court isn't part of building coverage, it's lot coverage and they don't have an increase to the existing one. So they pretty much cleaned it up based on the same site plan. And they also added the green roofs and stuff like that to this updated plan.
Okay, so my question is just in terms of what we would potentially be voting on, the variance. We require to give the minimum variance, the application is for twenty point six as the building cover. So it'd be a five point six variance. During the public hearing, I thought the applicant said that that number was recalculated nineteen point something. Do you know what that figure is?
Nineteen point seven on this.
They did reduce it from the twenty point something to a building coverage of nineteen point seven with the updated plan. We have the updated plan, it was distributed and we updated the zoning law determination.
Okay, so nineteen point seven is the number we'd be working off of, okay.
Yes, four point seven percent variance.
All right, great. I guess I should have looked at the revised zoning law determination. I was just looking at the, the plan. So apologies for that. Okay, discussion from the board.
It's, it's a nice house.
It is a nice house.
We don't, we don't treat, I know that we don't treat the, you know, like the greenery on top of the, the roof line and all that as. You know, anything different than just coverage, but. You know, I do like the attempt to. To keep everything environmentally friendly, so to speak.
I agree with Kelly. I think, I think they've tried very hard to, to make this thing work and I do agree with the overhangs. I don't think it, I, I think it's, it's a different structure than you normally see on Kandig Lake, but it's what they want and I. It's not that, the variance is not that huge.
Yeah, this is one of those ones that I'm having a little bit of a challenge with the revisions that the town did. You know, several years ago. You know, put these limitations in now on building coverage with the idea that the town is trying to limit the impact in terms of water runoff into the lake from impervious surfaces and they're doing some things to alleviate that. But also view shed from the lake so you don't look out from the boats and see a wall of structures along the shoreline.
It's interesting as, as we try to limit something like height. We may force people into stretching out, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, but. I mean, it's not just a, I mean, with, it's a varied texture and very, various different kinds of building materials that you see from the lake. So it's not like you have one big. Stonewall or, you know.
What was the height of this again? I know they, they, they did this just for that reason, but.
They kept it pretty, pretty low, actually, I thought.
Well, he mentioned it, but I don't remember what the number.
It was under. Yeah, I don't know.
As far as lot coverage you're requesting?
No, we were talking about height.
They're keeping it under the twenty-five feet.
Yeah, well, I want to say it was like eighteen or something like that was, seemed like. Which is a new, we've never had that come up in front of us.
No.
No, twenty-four eleven.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's an inch under. It's under, but it's.
Okay.
The variable surfaces, I think, make it less of a massive. Impingement.
Yeah, it's also, I mean, that, that area down there is kind of challenged to begin with. I know they have a big enough parcel, but. I don't know, I. I like that they've, you know, done things differently so that there is a lot of, you know, still the water flows and. There's, you know, the rain, rain garden and whatnot that he was referring to, so. I don't know. I don't, I know that the size is over, but. It would have been nice to see what else we've granted down there, if, if anything.
Well, we haven't down there. I mean, since the code was changed. We've been very, very limited in what we've granted in terms of building coverage. I don't think we've ever really gone over by much more than a percent, maybe. Except for some real problem neighborhoods, there's.
I was gonna say, I think we, we have a couple of times, but it was right. It was very problematic, you know, lot to begin with, so.
Yeah, for some reason, it's, it's like in Poplar Beach and areas like that where. You know, every single house is way, way over just because those lots are so, so miniscule.
Yeah. So, so the total square footage was, was around forty-five hundred, correct? I, I think was what your comment was.
Well, I was just adding up off of the site plan, you know, the existing home at six seventy, the porch at ninety-eight, the house, the covered patio, all that. They've got their little calculation here that Chris just pulled up. That's everything though, that's including the pickleball court, which is part of our. Application. Yeah, I mean, I mean, we'll, we'll likely just have to vote on it. To me, it just seems like a big, long. Structure on a parcel that size. Its back property line is, what is it, like a hundred ninety-three feet long? Got maybe. What's the side setback?
Yeah.
Ten feet and on the other side, you've maybe got sixty feet. So of the hundred ninety. Three feet, maybe all of it, but seventy feet is, is structure.
So next, next year, next year, we're looking at a, at a storage shed then for you. You know, that's, so you can imagine a year from today, that's what we'll be looking at. Okay, I, I'm okay with the, with the proposal. I know that they took pains to try to conform and they mostly did. And I, I, this particular structure might become a model for, for other architects in the area, you know, we'll see.
I thought you were gonna ask him to play pickleball there with your question.
I think because they.
Looking for an invite.
Because money's not an issue. I just was wondering if they want, wanted to look beyond because there are. New surfaces that are, that are being introduced in pickleball and, and they're a lot easier on the, on the wear and tear.
Trying to get the competition to scrape this, scrape this life off them, be able to. I was just curious as to what the, the actual length of the building was, is, is what is the lake's front? View of it, and I don't think it's longer than the pickleball court. Is it's over sixty feet?
The pickleball court's sixty feet.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a gauge as to what you're looking at from the lake. I think Terrence makes a good point. That, that's, that's part of the issue with the, the, the building coverage, but. It's a big spot.
Yeah.
Hundred, hundred and eighty feet, isn't it?
Yeah.
So you, so what are your concerns, Terrence? That's just, it's just, because we have, we'd be setting precedent or is a.
My concerns really are, are two primary things. First is that. You know, this is a fairly large lot, nearly thirty thousand square feet. You can build a pretty good sized home within code on that. And we're going, you know, quite a bit over that. You know, if they're allowed fifteen percent and we're going to basically almost twenty, so essentially it's a. You know, what is that, a thirty-three percent increase over what's allowed? I mean, you have a parcel which is existingly compliant with the code. The existing building coverage is, I think it was like seven or eight percent, let me see here, seven point three percent. And you're gonna, you know, nearly triple that. I don't see a lot of extenuating circumstances in terms of findings of fact that you can use to differentiate this parcel from any other. And we've been pretty, pretty tight on these building coverages. Because it's an expressed intent of the, of the town board with these code revisions to limit that visual impact from the lake. You know, with that, we're the release valve, that's what we are here for, but I think that, you know, we've got to think about the impact. On the neighborhood, on the community, based upon the expressed intent of the board through their, its legislation and, you know, this to me is a pretty big ask.
Where would they be without the existing home?
Right.
Where would they be without the existing home if that were to disappear?
Um, I don't know.
I mean, that's six hundred and seventy square foot, right? Plus ninety, ninety square foot porch from what I'm looking at, so. But, but I'm wondering, so like, I know that they said the overhang is kind of calculated into that. You know, I mean. I don't know, I don't know how I, how I feel about that. If it's not, I mean, if it was, if you took all the, the, those away, would it be compliant? Or, you know. I don't know.
I think the code requires the, to include the overhang, doesn't it, Chris Jensen?
Yeah.
If it's under two feet, you don't include it. If it's over two feet, then you start including it. That's where some of their modifications came. I mean, they do have some openings in their overhangs which grass is underneath and stuff. They have a green roof. So as far as doing the calculations, I was trying to work with them to get it where it is now.
Yeah, because I was wondering, I mean, if you actually, I know that it's not like that now, it's not in code, but. You know, to calculate all the grass space, you know, the, like you said, the overhangs that, you know, they're open. You know, if you actually looked at those, I mean, would it be compliant? But that's not our job, I, I realize that, but I'm just. It kind of makes me rethink of. How I want to address it anyway, so.
Well, if you pan and look at the, at these, at this Google, look, would you say what they are proposing is out of character for this neighborhood? Well, if you pan and look at the, at these, at this Google look, would you say what they are proposing is out of character for this neighborhood? I guess we haven't discussed that.
No.
No.
Actually, might improve it.
Is it that substantial?
It's substantial in my mind. I'm not sure how others feel about that.
So what is the building coverage? I mean, the lot coverage, what are we?
Nineteen point seven. Or built, that's for building coverage, area variance for building coverage, nineteen point seven. It's a four point seven percent variance for that lot size.
So your question's right, that we consider the, the five is undesirable change. Can it be achieved by another feasible method? Is it substantial? Adverse impact on environmental conditions? And is it self-created?
Well, it's obviously self-created. It can be, be achieved by other methods, yes. But, I don't know.
But there are factors you consider. It's not in, you know, in a five-point test that you have to satisfy all of them. They're, they're factors.
Right.
But, I, I mean, I've given my piece on it. If others want to discuss, I think we should continue with that, but we could also go forward and vote.
Well, you've messed me up because I, I am now on the fence based on what you said. So I'm that closer to be, being ready to vote. Now, you've given, given me something to think about.
You, you can always ask the applicant to come back next month and try to see what they can cut. Because I, you know, just a quick look at it says, says that they could cut some things like the paths a little bit off the drive without losing functionality.
I was gonna ask that too, because, I mean, if we vote on it and it goes against them, they have to be significant enough to, right? I mean, to reapply, so.
The applicant may very well welcome the opportunity to make some changes. And since the board's given them some direction, that in this conversation, I think they may very well welcome that.
But just for clarity, and Chris Jensen, you know, chime in here. In terms of the building coverage, we're only looking at structures, right? The, the driveway sidewalks, things like that, they don't, they're not included in building coverage, just lot coverage. Am I correct?
Yep, we're looking at stairs, decks, concrete. We're not looking at driveways, sidewalks, pickleball courts, stuff like that.
But we're looking at lot coverage here.
Here's a list of items we're looking at. It's the existing building, existing porch, new building, bridge, covered patio and balcony, covered patio with green roof and roof overhangs.
Yeah.
Fire? I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, this is a great one. This is, thanks for pulling this up, Chris. This is what we should be looking at. Your number is fifty-eight forty-eight. There, that's the total building coverage, five thousand eight hundred forty-eight square feet.
Why are they keeping the existing house? Is there a reason for that or?
Um, I don't know what we got into with the applicant. My guess is just based off of the drawings that it will be some sort of attached guest house structure. Not sure. It's got that little, you know, kind of connector there to the main structure.
Right.
But I don't know that we didn't ask that question.
Maybe, I don't know, it's up to the board, I mean, obviously, but maybe we could request a continuation. I mean, I don't know what our month looks like next month, but, or this month. What do you guys think?
We need to get it, we need to do this right, so that, that wouldn't be a problem. I'm truly on the fence right now. I'm, I'm trained to digest what Terrence said. And the, the lot coverage is, is an issue for me. I guess I'd be interested in that neighborhood. I don't know if you can go by that, but but it, at least other variances that we've granted. You know, help me with this. The lot coverage is.
What would the lot coverage be with, with, with the way it was?
Lot coverage is less than what it was prior, so it's not an increase in the degree of non-conformance or variance was not thought.
Oh, I see.
But still.
Well, it's not an issue with lot coverage. It's risk building. And I don't, I, you know, if you want to, if we can postpone it, I'd like to, I should have asked the question. Why do you need the existing house? Because if we get rid of that and the bridge and the porch, maybe you don't need a variance.
Or at, at least reduce something, right? I mean, gi- give us something to work with.
Is your problem, Bob, that because Terrence says it's substantial or is it?
Yes. But I'm also torn between the, that and the neighborhood, Dave. The visual of the neighborhood, I don't, my point of reference is a little off. I'm, I'm having a little trouble with that. I think what I need to do is get in the car and, and go out and look around a little bit more.
I think you need a drone to get in there because it's hard to see, really. I mean, it's, but that topical or like that picture that Chris put up, you know, from Google Maps, it actually helped a little bit. The neighborhood looked, looked worse than what you can see from, from driving by in the car, you know, like with all the buildings and everything, the roof lines and whatnot.
So based on my quick math, they would need to shave fourteen hundred square feet of building to be within code. Thirteen ninety-eight point four, so basically fourteen hundred square feet. Can you go back to that, what you just had up, Chris Jensen? So if they took the existing home, which is six seventy, I think the existing porch is on the existing home, right, Chris?
Yeah, I think, I think it is too. No, it's not.
Because there is no other structure. It's gotta be on the existing home.
Correct.
That gets them to eight hundred and seventy.
Right. If they're at least a little closer, though, I mean, you know.
I don't feel that the house without the existing home is out of the character of the neighborhood or is that substantial? I mean, it seems like we've granted a lot more, bigger places than that, but granted, they've got all kinds of porches and, and I know they've tried to, you know, amend this with the overhangs and the, the, the green roofs, but I'm not disagreeing with, with anybody on this. I, I just think I'm trying to do what's best for the town.
Yeah, so they've got, you know, almost nine hundred square feet right there to play with, plus their outdoor covered spaces. There's seventeen hundred square feet right there.
My guess is from a functional status, the existing house probably is much more functionally important as opposed to outdoor covered patios. I mean, you can't have guests sleeping on an outdoor covered patio most of the time, but I mean, that's probably, I assume they're gonna use it for a guest house and.
Depends on the guests.
So I mean, the board, you know, we really, I think, should decide as a board what we want to do. I'm a no vote on this, but I'm only one. We could reopen it and ask the applicant if they would like to adjourn to submit a revised plan. They don't have to. Or we can just vote.
Well, I'll, I don't know. I, I guess I'll, I don't know if I need to make a motion or not, but let's, I would like to see what the applicant would like to do. If they wanna continue it for this, the next hearing or, well, it's up to the board, obviously, but that's, that's where I'm at.
Pipe it into chat. They could let the board, the zoning board know.
Because this is a recommended denial from county planning, so you need four votes to approve.
Gotcha.
They did just enter something into the chat that, that they really would like to come back.
Okay.
I think that's reasonable.
Well, Kelly, you want to make your motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You're making a push to reopen the public hearing and continue until the next scheduled zoning board meeting?
Yes, I was just about to say that.
Second.
Okay, a second from Dave. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
No, is that, does that mean the second meeting this month or does that mean the, the July meeting? We're, we're, just so we're, we're clear on this.
Yeah. I guess it would probably be up to the applicant, wasn't it?
This is the main meeting.
Right.
It's that when they get their, their paperwork and change materials in, whether or not we have sufficient time to advertise and stuff.
Okay. All right. Well, that concludes our deliberations. Let me go back to our agenda. Chris, do we have any requests for rehearing?
I have nothing in front of me.
Okay.
Dual road.
Oh, dual, yeah, the first one, Brian Beckwith.
Yeah, he called him twice already. He, uh, no one's here representing him right now.
Okay.
Well, we got there with adjourn. This one, you know, rehearing is if so, if we've made a decision and somebody lodges a, an application to have it reheard. I forget the town law reference, but there, doesn't it have to be unanimous vote, Chris Naylor? For rehearing?
All right, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so we have none of the votes right now.
And it would have to be made by motion of a, on motion of a zoning board member. So if there's no such motion, there's, uh, there's no deliberation to be had.
You're referring to the Beckwith one, right?
No, Beckwith is not a rehearing. It's just an adjournment. I'm saying we have no rehearings.
Okay.
April minutes, I'll make a motion that we approve those as presented.
Second.
A move.
By Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Okay.
Did Johnson type those?
I did not expect anything.
No, I think it was Michelle, right?
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Okay, and then anything you want to preview for us for our June meeting on the fifteenth?
Nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay.
How about the ordinary?
Yeah, right?
You'll have the ordinary.
How many applications will we have? Do we know?
On, not totally yet. I don't know.
Okay.
So we have a meeting in two weeks, two weeks from today, right?
Two weeks, yep.
Lord.
Do appreciate your being back, Terrence. That made things a lot easier and run by.
What happened last time?
Oh, my goodness.
Just technology issues?
Yeah, I, I couldn't get in for till about ten after.
Me too. Same thing. I went to click, sign in like I normally do and scrambled looking around for a passcode and by the time I got on, everybody was already saying, let's reschedule.
Several, several people couldn't get in who were, you know, presenting. I didn't have to use a password tonight again.
Not either.
It was great tonight.
Last time was the only time I've ever had to use a password.
So, so we did remove a lot of the safety features to make that so it works this time, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was, that was appreciated.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that was the issue with the town board, that some of the safety features were off and.
Oh.
So. Yeah.
So we're good to go now anyways.
Yep.
We'll keep it under control, Bob.
For sure.
All right, well, I'll make a motion then at seven forty-five that we adjourn to June fifteenth.
I second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thanks, everyone.
Secure.
Have a good night.
Good evening.